Call to order of the June 18, 2018, Wilson County Commission Meeting. We welcome all of our visitors and invite you back as often as you have an opportunity. This time, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Stafford for the prayer and the pledge. And before, as she comes to do that, I would like to read a thank you card from Commissioner Patton. Thank you so much for your calls, texts, emails, Facebook messages, flowers, and visits to the funeral home. Thanks also to everyone for their thoughts and prayers. Our thoughts are with you, Ms. Commissioner Patton. I'd also like to remind all of you that Mr. Jim Kittle that works in our office, his dad passed away. And tomorrow, from 2:00 to 8:00 at Watertown Funeral Home, he will be there at Hunter Funeral Home. And then on Wednesday, from 10:00 to 2:00, his visitation again, and the funeral will be at 2:00 o'clock. And just ask you to remember him. He was a longtime educator in our county as well. Commissioner Stafford?
Please stand. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Prayer, Ms. Stafford?
She didn't tell me about the prayers, so I'd like to ask Commissioner Gary Keefe to...
Please stand.
Good evening, Father. We just want to thank you for the opportunity that we have to be here tonight to conduct the business of this county. We ask that you let us make wise decisions. Let us make decisions that will be beneficial not only to the departments in this county, but also to the citizens of this county, Lord. We ask those that are... Be with those that are not with us tonight, Lord, whatever the reason might be. Just watch over them, to guide, guard, and direct us during this meeting, Lord. Your will be done. Christ's name, pray amen.
Thank you. You will press yes on your panel, record your presence in tonight's meeting. Nineteen present and six absent. This time, the historic moment by Commissioner Jerry McFarland.
Thank you, Commissioner McFarland. General, we're in... Oh, it's two best friends with assholes. One is we're shooting live with our video tonight, and I want to thank the student interns here from Wilson Central High School, and go to Russell and Neil and Seth Sanders there, here running cameras, and I'm so running the switch back there if you had any chance to take the switch and make do before we leave. And this will be the last historic moment I'll be doing in short term, for a couple of months when we get past this election and I'll get back into it after that. Starting off, I got a phone call a week... Two weeks ago yesterday, from county historian John Wagner, Smith County, and he screamed on the phone, "Jerry, we got a hand grenade." And I got left over the maneuvers. So, if we got into discussing with him, he sent me a picture of it, and sure enough, we had a what was actually a tear gas grenade left over the maneuvers, and all these items were found in an old smokehouse in the Gordon, Tennessee area. And that just frightened the death of hand grenade. And it is a grenade canister, and it does have tear gas in it, which pretty much harmed its security. But that opened up a lot of things, considering landmines and the other issue we're looking at. We saw this once before, a day to change set of mines out on the Hunter's Point Bridge, the old Hunter's Point Bridge. There were 250,000 landmines, like the upper left, that were put all around middle Tennessee. The bottom of them on the right there is actually a live mine, and it was found out here on that Simpson Park lane. Next slide will show the... That was the M1... I'm sorry, N4 landmine. It was a practice mine, but even practice mines could blow up, and it'd take your legs off, up to your knees, and that was found also here in Wilson County. There were a number of those found here. There were 68 of them found at Wilson Central High School. When we cleaned up out there, seven of those were still live. So, it was moved over from there. I didn't realize it to some recent studies, but those... That gas... Tear gas grenade, there were gas masks that were issued to civilians by the Army. And this is one of them. It was found in that smokehouse. It's a civilian model gas mask, because they battled up and down the streets of Gordon with... Did some here in Lebanon, but this was for the noncombatants, and it did filter out the tear gas that was used in those battles that they had. Also, gas can. This is on a particular command vehicle with the same kind of gas can, with no gas can in it, for use forever. There was a gas can in there. What's crazy about it, World War II gas can. The World War II gasoline is still in it. So, a lot of things got left behind. It's commonly called a Jerry can, named after the Germans' design of that particular Jerry can. There were a lot of other artifacts that were found there, like bullets, and shaving brushes, and sewing kits, and just a number variety of items that were found. And this will happen to be ration books. If you didn't have a ration book, you couldn't get your five pounds of sugar each week or month, or whatever it is. Some of these ration books were necessary for everybody to have at that time, and they were here used during the maneuvers here during the World War II training. This is the last thing I want to share with you. We'll just hold right there just a minute. There's a number of soldiers came here and met a lot of girls and married, came back after the war and married. It's called sweetheart bracelet. And that heart opened up, and generally what they would do, cut a lock in the hair, put it in, give it to their sweetheart, write letters, and hopefully after the war, re-meet them again. So, that's the sweetheart bracelet we're found in that, and that's just kind of unique. And that's my report for dealing with this year. Thank you very much. Got to turn the lights back on.
Thank you, Commissioner McFarland. We do appreciate you making the effort and taking the time to share those with us, and we've enjoyed those. Report from the steering committee, Commissioner Walker.
Yes, the steering committee met on Thursday, June 7th, at 6:45 PM in the upstairs conference room. I move that the minutes be filed and received.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Walker?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? And the consent agenda?
Yes, we do have a consent agenda. I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? It's only speed limits, there's no money involved, so therefore, we'll just, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Okay. Special recognition at this time, Commissioner Sarah Patton.
We have some special guests with us tonight from Watertown High School. They've accomplished a really unique thing, and I want to share with you how proud we are of them in Watertown. This is... This may not... May or may not be in your packet, I don't know, but... And tonight, we were going to have a speech from a young man, but he's not with us tonight from Ms. Ruth from the 4-H Department. It's also dairy month. But right now, I'd like to introduce these people to you and tell you what they have done. The resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring the Watertown High School Future Business Leaders of America, whereas Ella Williams and Nathan Holcomb... Ms. Williams is their teacher, and Mr. Nathan Holcomb assists her, and Ms. Williams is in Florida, but her husband has... Where is Jay? Jay, come up here. Jay has... He has agreed to step in. So, whereas Ms. Ella Williams and Nathan Holcomb serve as advisors to the Watertown High School Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, and whereas, on March... In March 2018, they took a group of Watertown High School FBLA members to the State Leadership Conference in Chattanooga, Tennessee. And whereas, at that conference, eight students placed first in their competitive events and will now be attending the FBLA National Leadership Conference, June 27th through July 2nd, 2018, in Baltimore, Maryland. Whereas, those placing first at the state conference as the parliamentary procedure team include Senior Hannah Josie, Senior Amanda Stanley, Junior Kent Jones, and Junior Landry Williams. And whereas, those finishing in first place in the state competition as the introduction to business presentation team include Sidney Morell, Lorena Upchurch, and Cassidy Parrisher, all sophomores. And whereas, Neil Reeves placed first at the state competition in economics, but due to summer travel conflicts, will not be able to attend the national conference. And whereas, Ella Williams and her husband Jay Williams will serve as chaperones for this trip. And whereas, each student has worked hard to raise their own money to attend the national conference, with each one being responsible for raising enough money for their own registration, airfare, hotel, and hotel transfers, as well as their food expenses. Now there, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize and honor the Watertown High School Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, for their accomplishments over the years accumulating, and the eight students listed above earning the right to compete against the best students in the nation at the FBLA National Leadership Conference in Baltimore, Maryland. Be it fully resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to each student, their advisors, Ella Williams and Nathan Holcomb, and to the Watertown High School Principal, Jeff Luttrell, for display at Watertown High School. Motion to accept.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So he can take your picture.
Congratulations. And Mr. Jay here is... His mom was an outstanding science teacher at Watertown High School for many years, one of my teachers at the time, and just taught many years. Taught, no books involved. She just did a tremendous job, and fond memories of her. This time, reading of the minutes, the report for the minutes committee, Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor. The minutes committee met Thursday, June 7th, 6:30 upstairs here in the courthouse. I move the minutes be received and filed.
Got a second now. Commissioner McFarland.
Yes, sir. We have a correction I'd like to make on the minutes on the eight... Resolution 815-9 should be added in a one-year for the filming of the two committees, which would be education and budget. And that was not included in it. I'd like to get the minutes so corrected. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Reading of the minutes? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? This time, just like to commend Commissioner Franklin for bringing the resolution to do the videoing. We did the budget committee and the education committee, and I got several responses back about how good people enjoyed those. And of course, tonight is our first night for the full county commission meeting, so hats off to you for bringing that resolution. Also, Commissioner Walker, with the cable TV committee, Commissioner Bush, Commissioner Franklin, Commissioner Brown, and Commissioner Bishop, as they worked hard...
Communications organization has received a grant from Tennessee Economic Development of 17.25 million. And of course, they had to also place half of that in net as well, and that's actually 800 homes are going to be affected by having internet. And Commissioner Walker, you'd like to elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. I would just like to say that the State of Tennessee Economic Development Committee gave away 10 million awards in practice this first round this year. DTC got 1.725, so they almost got 20% of all the grants. They're the second highest-scoring grant application that was submitted, with over 60 applicants across the whole state. So, they did a great job, and I want to thank them and the folks out there in rural communities and Wilson, the Captain Smith, I'm going to reiterate this back.
Appreciate you and the committee continuing to try and work for people in a rural area. You will notice the purple lights outside, and they are in... They're in honor of June as Alzheimer's and brain health awareness month. And as Commissioner Patton already said, this is dairy month, and next month, Ruth Carell will have the young man here to deliver a speech for us. So, we appreciate all of those. You should have gotten in your packet, I mean, in an email today, the budget committee process as we go forward. Have any questions on that, please, so I'll be glad to talk through that with you. I have cleared that through with the finance director and the budget chair. Other than that, we'll move forward. If you're good, all your notaries good on your list. Any other motion to approve the notaries?
No motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Library board, you're to elect one member to serve a three-year term on the library board. This appointment will expire on June 30, 2021. I'd like to recommend Mr. Diane Weddick.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
City of Lebanon Municipal Airport Commission needs one member. You are to confirm the appointment of a county representative to the City of Lebanon Municipal Airport. The gentry has already served his one term there and done a tremendous job, and the people there, I'd like to have him back. So, I would... Entertain a motion.
No motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? And then solid waste regional planning member, you are to confirm the appointment to fill the unexpired term of solid waste regional planning board that was vacated by Mr. Bobby Sloan, which retired. We placed that back in his position, and the person in his position, of course, is Chris Richardson that works for us. So, you have... You had information in there about that. Do I hear a motion on that? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Report from emergency management committee, Commissioner Rich.
No report.
And Director Cooper will present the emergency management director's report.
Mayor.
Sir.
Board of County Commissioners. A report initially didn't make it in your packet, but I think it's on your desk at this time. A few areas that I want to bring out is we have had an increase in number of calls in particularly three different areas. One of those has been suicides. The incline of suicides has increased, and really, there's no age or gender to these. We've had all kinds that... And we are starting to put out some suicide brochures along with that to help control some of that if we can. Also, we've had an increase in number of structure fires. In the last two weeks, we've probably had about 10. None of those at this time are considered arson. All of those are either kitchen fires or started from brush fire, something like that. But I did want to let you know that those numbers are up. On our station generator program, I think Commissioner Munter had mentioned that a while back. Where we're at on that, Station 11, we installed their generator this week in Norrington. Station 7, which is Statesville, and Station 8, which is on Carthage Highway, the generators are in, and they have been serviced, so they're the next two that will be installed probably within the next two to three weeks. Once that is completed, every station will be on backup power. So, that's where we stand on that. Right now, we are continuing working with Lebanon Special School District and Wilson County Schools and law enforcement on risk assessments and emergency operational plans, and that's based on state funding that had come in for school security. So, we are helping with that. I do want to make mention that Maristone Assisted Living in Providence, they did go through their storm ready certification via the National Weather Service. And to mention, they are the first assisted living facility in a state of Tennessee to get that certification. So, I did want to make that mention to y'all. Outside of that, that completes my report unless there's any questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from law enforcement committee, Commissioner Justice. Sheriff Bryan is in training and will not be here. His report is in your packet, and he said you could call him if you have questions. I'd like to hear a motion to approve that report. Any discussion for that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Report from the education committee, Commissioner Stafford.
The education committee met Thursday, June 7th, 6:00 PM upstairs courtroom. If there are no corrections or deletions, I move this report be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Director of Schools, report, Dr. Donna Wright.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mayor, you have a very brief report in your packet. Several things I did bring to your attention is... As far as comments and some issues that we are going to bring before, and I've also given you some additional backup information I'll go over in just a minute. But something I want to bring to your attention is as far as the class of 2018 accomplishments, which is on the second page of your board report. And really outstanding graduates. We had to increase the amount of scholarships awarded or offered to 52 million, and if you'll look there, you'll see that those accepted totaled a little over $38 million. And so, you're talking about an outstanding class that just left us. And with that, they finished out their composite on their ACT at 21.2, which was absolutely outstanding. So, very proud of that class. Also, recognized retirements this last couple of weeks. And again, that's always a sad time, and particularly when you look at the... Just not only the history, the institutional knowledge that they take with them, but they were celebrated and more or less recognized for their many years. There were 37 employees that we recognized for retirement that went out the door with 964 years of experience in education. I gave something, I asked Ms. Dowdy to please pass it out. It's an attachment as far as with some supporting documents. Several of you have made some calls to the office, either wanting some information about something or wanting some clarification of something that you might have even heard or anything. So, I felt it much better just to bring information so it could be shared with everyone. The first thing that you have is the average teacher salary rankings, and that's something that's been requested several times, just as far as how do we compare in the state? And I have to bring it to your attention simply because it's hard to determine what the rankings are anymore, particularly now that school districts are obligated to submit either what they refer to as a differentiated pay plan or performance pay plan. So, it's not the old model of where you had the step lines. I can see Commissioner Walker over there nodding his head, so he knows what I'm referring to. And so, that comparison becomes hard, but you can at least look at as far as averages. And this information that you have in front of you was calculated by the State Department of Education. You can go into their statistical database and pull that together. What I also did is show what are the comparability among surrounding district, just so you'll have a point of comparison. We are number 55 in that ranking out of 100 and, I think, 45 districts that they ranked, and some of them that, again, are some of the new municipalities that are single high schools, small districts that came out of Shelby County. But you'll see, for example, Lebanon City's 16th. And again, when you start looking as far as the comparing numbers, Murfreesboro City's 19. You've got Davidson County, which, you know, they're sitting on nearly a billion-dollar budget, but they're also in the news right now because they're also looking at a deficit that they're having to come back with. They're 22. Williamson County, which in the last three years have bumped up, and they're now 26. Rutherford County's sitting at 31. And again, you can go through this and see what those comparabilities are as far as teacher salaries. And some of them, too, that you have to also take into account as far as how some of them build their insurance into their salary package. The next thing that you have, this is something that we're always looking at, and I know that I bring it to you because, again, this becomes very important because it's one area that we can compare ourselves nationally. And Commissioner Bush had asked us for some information, and it was one of those, as we keep digging, it's really good to look at as far as what's occurred, particularly in the last five years. We are one of 13 states, again, and you've heard this, that requires the ACT for graduation. All you have to do is sit, bubble in your name, and submit. And what was being lost, particularly in this district, was the fiscal loss as far as what they were giving up with Hope Scholarship opportunities based on sitting for the ACT. And so, what has happened now that our students are starting to prepare, and I guess, yes, they prepare because really, the ACT is sort of a look at what their course of studies has been up to that point, and how well they've done, particularly in mathematics. And so, what you will see as we look at that comparison, and I'm giving you the class of 2018, we are required now by the state to have at least a 95% participation rate. And if you'll look, as far as... We didn't have the calculation from 2013 because, again, there was not the significance placed on it as we place on it now. And in 2018, we had 99%, and our students are taking it multiple times. And so, they either had to be ill or they just were not present, because we have parents now saying they will take the test. And when you look at the composite or the benchmarks that you look across that and look how our students have prepared themselves over the years, again, with each successful graduating class, the thing that I want to really bring to your attention is the percentage now that have moved over the 21. That is significant. And so, the students that we are really focusing on now, particularly starting with that sophomore year, is that gap between 17 and 21, as far as moving and identifying where it is their skill deficit might be. And it's usually, believe it or not, punctuation's number one. This is across the country, and you know what's happened there. It's because of texting and figuring out that they might not need a comma or a semicolon. And the second one is just operational foundation pieces in math, such as the multiplication, division of fractions, which is a precursor to algebra. And some of your very best students have forgotten those operations. So, those are things that we look at because they seem simple, but they make a difference. So, I want to give you that information there because we continue to show improvement in that ACT, and particularly the number of kids that have moved above a 25. And then when you get into that 29 and above, perfect scores 36, you're talking about some really good money for college. If you'll also notice, I put in your notes there, in 2013, we tested a little over 1,200 students and tested nearly 1,500 this year as far as senior class and... Not senior class, but overall for ACT, and we're projecting over 1,600 will test next year. So, what we're seeing is an increase as far as the numbers that are even being tested. The next thing I have for just... So you'll have it for your records, because, again, I was asked by a couple of commissioners on this because it was something that was newsworthy, as whether with two extended school programs that we have, the Kids Club and the Learning Center, both are tuition-based. The Learning Center is what provides employee daycare. And we are one of four districts in the state that provides some form of childcare, and it's not that other districts don't see the value of it, but it's a very expensive proposition, and it's one, it's hard to maintain, particularly getting the workers that you need. And what you will see in there was the question of whether we could pull that out of our budget. And you see the notation there from the executive director of school finance from the State Department of Education, as well as concurrence from general counsel for the state. Says, "No Tennessee foundation program, school funds, or any required local matching funds shall be used in connection with the operation of these programs, but the board may charge a fee of any child," and you can read on, and you've got the TCA code. We asked for clarification because I asked Mr. Hall to make sure that this was answered. And the question that we wanted to make sure that was clarified through the state was this opinion would also apply to staff daycare services during the school day as well. And Mary Andersky, who is the executive director for the state, said, "Yes, it would apply to any childcare program." So, that is there for you as well. And then also a validation from the State Department of Education on our extended school programs. There was a question that was placed before the state, whether we were in compliance, meeting ratio, and the quality of the program. And again, you can see there that not only a quality program, but we do meet all areas of compliance, plus the ratio that's required by the state, and we have to answer to the State Department of Education. And then that last piece there, all it says is private act. You will hear more about that. We are going to pursue as far as action to go... We are going to pursue as far as action to go through the process of, and asking for exemption or at least a consideration to create our own accountability and assessment system. We've now had four years of really with what the state has provided, with no or little actionable data to show or give us just diagnostic information on our schools, and particularly with our students, and it impacts our teachers as far as teacher effectiveness. And so we are going to very respectfully request that we be allowed to pursue that and come with something that not only is a robust system of assessments, but also one that we can get a quick turnaround, do not have to wait till the next school year starts before we have any information that we can use and take as far as the effort to either improve instruction, look at our instruction closely, whatever it might be. And because much of what we've been receiving from the state has not been something that we could use, or it arrives too late, the next class has already moved on. And so with that, that concludes my report for tonight.
Any discussion? Commissioner Gentry.
Yes, Dr. Wright. After your report, it has a lot of the laws that came out of the state. And many of those require you to do things, I just like defibrillators, et cetera, et cetera. Are we doing those things now?
Yes, we've been in compliance for that for years. In fact, that's one that if anything, we're, we've been a model. We're very fortunate to have a gentleman by the name of Chuck Whitlock that not only makes sure that we are in compliance, but we also have updates. And we've had a couple of districts that are wanting some assistance as far as where not only do we get those, but how we've been able to manage as far as in all of our schools.
Now, the other laws, have they added, they've added to the cost of operations, correct?
Well, some of them. And I did not mean for you to get that brief summary that was provided to the board, because that was lengthy, but many of those that you're seeing that are actionable as far as July 1st, you will see that many of them do not have a fiscal note attached, but we assume that. So yes, you caught that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, sir. Do most districts, and I certainly don't know this, but do most districts pay more for seasoned, older teachers, teachers been around 20, 30 years? Do they pay more?
Seasoned, older teachers?
Well, you know, that's what I'm told to say now.
Back on the old model, before districts had to adopt a different pay plan, what you would see, and what I certainly saw in the old salary models, teachers usually capped at 17 or 20 years. And unless there was a percentage or something that would come from the state, and sometimes it would, might amount, Ms. Franklin, to maybe $250 a year, believe it or not. And so that was part of the reason is that this, one of the reasons that the state looked at moving the model, because like in ours, as far as performance pay, there is no cap. And as far as that level of effectiveness, they continue to earn that every year. And so, big difference. And that's something particularly our 20-year-plus veterans have seen, that they have, you know, received pay raises.
But teachers that are just starting their first year tend to probably make less. Somebody that's been around 18 years.
Yes, that's why we had to bump our starting salary up to be competitive with surrounding districts.
So this comparison could also kind of penalize fast-growing areas that are hiring lots of new teachers, because they would generally start at a lower rate.
Well, yeah, they'll start at, you know, our entering pay now is $40,000. And with that, when you look at as far as when those retire out, you're going to replace them with either, you know, the newly minted teachers instead of looking at seasoned. And so you're going to see an exchange there. So it balances out. But there's also, it's one of those things that you want to hope that you retain teachers for that three to five years, because that's also a loss of investment that you put into training for those new teachers.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Dr. Wright. Report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Keith.
Houston, June the 5th, and again on the 11th. The minutes should be in your packet. They can mostly be approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Ag Center Management Report, Commissioner McFarland.
The Education Management Committee is preparing to adjourn.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Animal Control, Commissioner McFarland.
Been blindsided, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
We did meet, again, I don't have the date. June 7th, here at the courthouse, and I have the minutes in your packet, move, be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Audit, Commissioner Bernard.
No report.
Back tax, Commissioner Patton.
No report.
Cable television, Commissioner Walker.
Cable TV Committee met this evening at 6:00 PM in the upstairs conference room. The minutes will be in next month's packet.
Developing Tourism, Commissioner Vanata.
Yes, Developing Tourism met on Thursday, May 31st, and again on Thursday, June the 7th. The minutes are in your packet, I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Commissioner Bishop.
Yes, let's back up a little bit. I wanted to say something about the animal tourism. We did not get the report from the director in our minutes. I didn't get one. Maybe somebody else did. Please.
Okay.
I believe that was spread out.
Okay, I will.
I'll put it in there next time. I'm sorry, I just forgot.
Any other discussion? Seeing none on the Tourism Committee Minutes, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Ethics, Commissioner Bush. Finance, Commissioner Glover.
At 4:00 PM in the upstairs conference room. Would the report be received and filed? Minutes was also placed on the desk. Any?
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Health and Welfare, Commissioner Stafford.
I'm sorry, just give me a second here, ma'am. Sometimes we all stuff it in the packet, that's why it's plain and clear. Anyway, Health and Welfare, we checked everything. It's on. May 24th, 8:00 PM in upstairs courtroom. Minutes in your packet, and I move they be received and filed.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Insurance, Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Keith.
Judicial met on May 31st in the upstairs courtroom. Minutes in your packet, if someone has some questions, I move they be approved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
On 12th at 5:30, I think the minutes were laid on your desk tonight, and I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Recreation, Commissioner Muncher.
Recreation met on May 17th at 5:00 PM in the conference room. The minutes are in your packet, I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Rules, Commissioner Muncher.
No report.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Rich.
The Urban Type Facility Board met on Friday, June 1st at the Urban Commission Office. Minutes in your packet, such a few questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Finance Director's Report, Mr. Aaron Maynard. All of you that had to pitch in tonight because the chairman of the committee was not here, I sure do appreciate it. I'd like to.
Good evening. First thing I need to do, and this should have gotten in your packet and didn't, if you want a copy afterwards, I will get you one. This is a report on debt obligation for the fire trucks and the cardiac monitors. And so if you'll allow me to go over that briefly, the face value of that capital outlay note, that's a six-year outlay note, by the way, is $1,891,000. The interest cost on that is 3.72%. I'll come back to that in just a minute. There's only a couple of fees that we have on this one. $2,000 to Basbury and Sims as legal counsel, and $2,000 to Stevens, $3,000 to Basbury and Sims as legal counsel. So that was the total fees paid in connection with the debt. With regards to the interest rate, an unintended consequence of the new tax bill, separated things into bank-qualified and non-bank-qualified. Basically, if it's a bank-qualified issue, the banks can deduct up to 80% of the interest. In this particular case, this one had to go as non-bank-qualified because of the potential bond issue that could be floated in the future for the new high school. So this particular one had to go as non-bank-qualified. Banks can't deduct the interest, therefore they're not nearly as attractive as they would otherwise be. So whether this was an unintended or intended effect of the new tax bill, anytime we issue anything that has to be non-bank-qualified, we're going to be looking at a little bit higher rate. You will have the option, if you so choose, to roll this into something that's bank-qualified later on down the road, thereby making it the total interest rate lower, or you can leave it as is. But we talked to several different banks. One of them actually put in a 3.16, and we were very excited until they, they didn't read the offering circular very well, because they thought it was bank-qualified. So after we explained to them that it was non-bank-qualified, they did not, they were unable to keep it at 3.16. So that's where we stand on that. As far as the finance report, we've received in the general fund 96.6% through May. As far as revenues are concerned, I'm completely confident, once we finish booking receivables and other things, we will be at 100% or a little better of our projected revenues. Expenditures are under control. I look forward to a positive outcome for the end of the year. It'll probably be mid-July before we can give you a good final number. And that's really all I have, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, I had sent you, you know, earlier about the 31 fund. If you could just get back with me on that.
Yes, sir. I apologize. I did not see, I did not see that. I will get back with you on that. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Justice.
This, this, this is the first time I've seen it too. I don't know if you emailed it or not.
Was it on your desk?
Yeah.
Okay, it was on the desk, good. I wasn't sure if she had gotten them out on the desk or not. Yes, sir.
Is this something you're comfortable with, or should we maybe have another meeting and decide what we want to do?
I don't think, my understanding, talking through it with Basbury and Sims and with Stevens, it's not really going to make a difference as far as, as far as the interest rate. We basically only had one bank that bid when it got down to, and it's a bank that usually wins probably the vast majority of our capital outlay notes. Again, I can get with you or any of the Commissioners and discuss, you know, when something has to go as non-bank-qualified. But when it is non-bank-qualified and the banks can't deduct the interest, well, first off, corporate tax rates overall are down to 20 or 21%. So let's just say that municipal debt is not as attractive as it once was.
So what does this cost us?
The total interest cost, I don't know if they put that on there or not. Yeah, I would have to run, I would have to find the amortization schedule on that, Mike. I didn't bring it up here with me. I'd have to find the amortization schedule on it. I'm not sure off the top of my head. We usually have it listed on there, other than just in the interest rate. We usually have a total interest cost listed, but I don't see it on this one. So I can get that to you, but I don't have it at the moment.
So I guess I'm confused. Were you supposed to approve this tonight?
Yes, sir. Yeah, this is simply a report on debt obligation that basically the debt itself was authorized already back a couple of meetings ago. Once we, once we execute, then the county commission, I'm required to read this into the record. Actually, you don't have to vote up or down, I don't think. I just have to read it into the record.
You don't vote?
Yeah, you don't have to vote. I just have to read it into the record.
I think the question really is, we did this because it was going to save us money. And the question is now, with this new law that's in effect that causes interest rates to go up, are we still saving May? Because that's, that was the whole reason we did it to begin with, because instead of leasing.
I was going to make it take more of our fund balance to try to...
Well, the leasing, the leasing was going to be even higher. The leasing rate was 3.98, 3.98 was the leasing rate, once they got done. So like I say, what we saw was a trickle-down effect, because the first rate we saw on the leasing was about three and a half. That was the first rate we saw on the leasing. And I knew we'd been doing capital outlay notes for less than three. Our debt management policy says that we will do, we will explore all options to get the best interest rate for the county.
I know you do. Don't get me wrong. I think...
No, sir.
Just a personal, you do like trying to find the best...
I'm just trying to answer your question as best I can. You know, the bottom line is, is as we move through this process, what we realized was, and again, this has a lot to do with a potential bond issue coming up for a school. If this was the only debt that you were going to issue for the next 12 months, then you could have gone ahead and done this as bank-qualified. The interest rate still would have been a little bit higher, because municipal and county bonds and county debt is just not as attractive as it used to be because of the change in the, change in the rules for the banks and tax law. So it still would have been a little bit, I believe, over 3%. In fact, we would have taken the 3.16 if we could have issued it as bank-qualified. As it stands, we had to take the 3.72. That was discussed with people on the Emergency Management Committee before we did it. I didn't, we didn't do that on our own. And again, I don't think it was any intent, anytime there's a tax bill passed, there are intended and unattended, intended and unintended consequences. Which one of these that falls under, I don't know. However, you know, you will see when you do non-bank-qualified in particular, and maybe even bank-qualified, you will see a difference in the interest rate. It's just not as attractive for banks to hold these things right now.
Commissioner Bush.
Yes, Aaron. Some months ago, we passed a resolution that said the general fund now is below $8 million. Any additional capital expenditures, I believe, requires a two-thirds vote of the county commission. Right, Mr. Wright?
It was any expenditure below 8 million out of the general fund. Out of the general fund. This is not general fund.
Okay, I'm trying to...
Yes.
So that leads to my next question.
Sure.
What was the intent of the definition of general fund? Because as I look at your respective reserves, which are, I could argue are part of the general fund, there's another $2 million there that have to be used by specific partners.
Right.
So we're at $7,900,000 plus $2 million.
Right.
All of a sudden, we are well above $8 million, depending on what was intended by this definition of general fund balance.
Sure, I can tell you.
And I don't recall.
I don't know exactly. I would have to look back at the resolution to see how it was written. The way the resolution should have been written would have been unassigned fund balance, unassigned below 8 million. That means without all the restricted, reserved, other types of fund balances. What you're talking about is the fund balance that is available for general spending, which is, which is unassigned. So therefore, seven point, at 7.9, what you're looking at there is our unassigned fund balance.
Okay. You and I have talked about this in terms of definition of these restricted reserves.
Yes, sir.
And most of them are restricted by state statute.
Correct.
But I did notice that some, and I apologize for not being able to identify them off the top of my head.
Yes.
Were established by county commission resolution.
Right.
As a result, I presume that those funds can, by county resolution, become unsecured. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, we'd have to look at those on a case, on a case-by-case basis. It depends if it was done, let's say, for example, if it was done under a private act, for example, it wouldn't be in state law, per se, TCA Code.
Then you'd have to modify the private act.
Then you'd have to modify the private act.
If that was done by county resolution.
If it was simply done by county resolution, then yes, that resolution can be undone. Correct.
Yes.
And we generally shouldn't refer to those, we may refer to those there. In the audit report, those technically shouldn't be referred to as restrictions, they should be referred to as commitments, because the county legislative body has the ability to... ability to reverse it, whereas if it's a restriction, the county legislative body has no ability to reverse it.
Could I ask you to, I know going into a very, very busy season, this has a lot to do with that season. Any budgets by the departments may mention here with these respective reserves.
Yes, sir.
Are to take specific account of those reserves when they plan on expenditures and to maybe also utilize those reserves before they dip into the general fund. Would you agree with that or not?
Frank, I'd have to take that on a case-by-case basis. In other words, you know, like a lot of those fee accounts, the county clerk is sitting behind me, the circuit court clerk data fee, a lot of those are restricted specifically to computer technology, repair, replacement, those kinds of things. So if they were coming to replace something that falls under that law, then that's where they take that from. They come forward, they do a budget amendment to take it out of their reserve and go forward. I'm trying to think of a scenario where that is not the case, where it's not restricted for a specific purpose outside of operations. And off the top of my head, one of you may think of it, if you think of something prior to me, I'm not thinking of a situation where there's a reserve out there that's just, that has no restriction on it whatsoever. In other words, it could be used for any operating purpose at all.
I note that on your report during the past year...
Yes, sir.
There has been only one utilization of these funds, and that's the department.
Yes, sir.
Nobody else dipped into these funds for any purpose whatsoever.
Right.
And I just want to put it on record that there's significant funds, $2 million, we have all of it.
Yeah.
And we are at a point where this affects how we spend money.
Sure.
To the $8 million criteria.
Sure.
So I think we have to look at this as part of the budget process over the course of the next couple of months.
Right. Well, I do know that one big part of that, Frank, is stormwater fees. I do know that stormwater is a big piece of that. And I will say this, that, you know, whether you are a fan of the EPA or not a fan of the EPA, they continue to leak requirements down. Years ago, they told us, you have to map all the streams in your county. So we went out, we started mapping the streams. Then they said, okay, you've got to monitor the streams in your county. And so we started monitoring. And then it became something else. And pretty soon, it's going to be, you know, where the county is going to have to do remediation to correct problems with groundwater and whatever. We're really already there, and the right person to talk to is really the stormwater person and not me. But it doesn't take much. If the EPA says you have to clean up all the streams in your county, you know, to use the most ridiculous example I can think of, because sometimes that's the easiest way to, easiest way to make a point. If they said, you know what, we can't have cow manure in streams anymore, you got to clean it up. No stormwater fees is a big part of it, but that's really there to deal with things that the EPA passes down to us that we know they're going to, it's just a matter of when and how harshly. And it's not dissimilar to what, you know, every county has streams and things like that. So we're all dealing with, we're all in the same boat as far as that's concerned.
Thank you, I appreciate your explanation. I still request that we take a look at these.
I'd be happy to.
You know, there's no need to have $2 million sitting there.
Yeah.
Making that a chunk of dollars.
Sure, we can look at them on a case-by-case basis and see what we can do. A lot of times, what you'll see too, Commissioner Bush, is you'll see a lot of computers, like in, let's take the circuit court clerk, for example. You might see a big chunk of that data fee. You might not see anything being done for two or three years, and then you'll see a big chunk of that data fee come in to replace a wide variety of different technology, you know, components used in the office. But I understand what you're saying, and I'd be more than happy, you know, along with the budget committee, to take a look at that.
Mr. Maynard, if you would, maybe give us all a definition, the next time we meet, on why they have a restricted fund, and why they make us put it in there to begin with, okay?
Sure.
Mr. Muncher?
Yes, to Commissioner Bush's point, if we could find a way, whether it's unrestricted funds or some other means to pay for this without the debt, would it be fair to say we would save around $70,000 to $75,000 just that?
Yeah, I would say that was probably fair to say, Commissioner Muncher. You know, the point being, and again, it's a case-by-case basis, but, you know, when you have a significant capital expenditure, you know, do you want to, particularly when you're waiting to see how the year is going to play out? And when I say that, what I'm saying is, is, you know, we've had some new things, that this is the first full year that they've been in effect, for one of those things being the pay plan or whatever else. And, you know, 8 million looks good on paper as far as fund balance is concerned. But if we got to the end of the year and we figured out operationally, we wound up in the red instead of the black, which I now know is not going to happen, by the way, but three months ago, I couldn't have told you that for certain. Here on June 18th, I can tell you for certain that, you know, we'll wind up in the black and everything will be good. You just, the question is, do you want to take $2 million out of your fund balance in a situation where you don't know for sure? Now, that being said, you can prepay these at any time. So these are not like bonds that you can't prepay. So that being said, if you choose to tomorrow, because you don't want to pay, you know, the interest rate that's on this, to prepay and pay this thing off, this is not a bond, this is an outlay note. It's just like borrowing money from the bank, there's no prepayment penalty. So you can pay it off if this body so chooses. Yes, sir.
One quick question. What did you say the interest rates were?
Were in terms of...
3.72?
3.72 was the, on the lease option that they gave us, it went up to 3.98 on the lease option. It started out at like 3.5 before the tax law changed. The original quote we had was before the change in the tax law. After the tax law changed, they came back with 3.98. The low quote we got was, well, it was from US Bank, and they thought it was bank qualified. They didn't realize that it was not. So they did 3.16.
So again, right off the top of your head, I'm not a hundred percent sure what everybody else does either. And the difference in 3.72 and 3.98, what's the payment difference? Couple of thousand dollars?
Yeah, there wasn't a lot of payment difference. No, ma'am. There was not a lot of payment difference. I'll say that. And I know I've been up here a long time. Any other questions first? I apologize, I know we don't like to go this long, but I did hear Director Cooper, who's probably already gone, mentioned suicide. And I know this is a subject that people shy away from, but I do want to say that as somebody who has had anxiety and depression issues since my 20s, probably wasn't diagnosed until my mid-20s, those of you who know me know I'm not an unhappy person. I may be, I may make people unhappy from time to time, but I myself am not an unhappy person. I just want to encourage people that you can live with anxiety and depression and lead a normal lifestyle, and please seek help. There is help available, and things get better. And if that's the only message that I can deliver, then that's the most important one. I'm an example of the fact that you can live with that kind of thing. As unfortunate as it is and as tough as it is at times, the sun does shine every morning, and you'll be glad to see it before too long. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maynard. No other questions? All in favor, say aye. Not opposed? For the Budget Committee, Commissioner Justice?
Budget Committee met June 7th, 7:00 PM here in the courthouse. The minutes are in a packet I moved, they'll be receiving the file.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Resolutions?
Is it time for a second session for the...
Still a few minutes away. I think we can move forward and do that one since we finished.
18-6-3, Resolution to Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 1718 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from the Ag Center Fund 124 to the Ag Center. Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 19 yes, 6 absent, resolution passes.
18-6-4, Resolution to Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 1718 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from the Ag Center Fund 124 to the Expo Center. Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 19 yes, 6 absent, resolution passes.
18-6-5, Resolution to Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 1718 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from the general fund and the county buildings. Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just one of those that drops us below 8 million, Aaron.
Uh, let's see. Yeah, we're already below.
Take 17.
17 votes. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good? Please record. 19 yes, 6 absent, resolution passes.
18-6-6, Resolution to Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 1718 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation from the clerk and master data fee reserve to the clerk and master. Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 19 yes, 6 absent, resolution passes.
18-6-7, Resolution to Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget for the 1718 fiscal year and to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 1718 fiscal year to make a line item transfer in the General Debt Services Fund. Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Stafford? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 19 yes, 6 absent, resolution passes.
18-6-8, Resolution to Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 1718 fiscal year for a lot item transfers in recreation. Motion to approve.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 19 yes, 6 absent, resolution passes.
18-6-9, Resolution to Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 1718 fiscal year by approving Wilson County Board of Education General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment 18-5. Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 19 yes, 6 absent, resolution passes.
18-6-10, Resolution to Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 1718 fiscal year by approving Wilson County Board of Education Central Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendment 18-6. Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good? Please record. 19 yes, 6 absent, resolution passes.
18-6-11, Resolution to Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, to adopt a continuing budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and to authorize the issuance of tax anticipation notes for the county of Wilson. Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 19 yes, 6 absent, resolution passes. At this time, we'll hold a public hearing. I need to go out of session. I hear a motion, I hear a second. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? I'll introduce Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Albrecht Scherz, Planning Director.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. A public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, June 18th, at 7:00 PM or thereafter in the county commission room of the Wilson County Courthouse located here at 228 East Main Street here in Lebanon, Tennessee. First rezoning request that we're having a public hearing on is for an application made by Brandon Goodwin to rezone the following properties from A1 Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial. The property is located at 9077 Lebanon Road and is referenced, or further referenced as Wilson County Tax Map 54 Parcels 66 and 67. The properties combined contain approximately 2.0 acres. A copy of this request has been on file in the Wilson County Planning Office located here in the basement and has been available for inspection during regular business hours. Anyone desiring to comment is requested to attend or come forward at this time.
Anyone here to speak on this property? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Usry. I'm at 205 West Fax Court in Old Hickory. It's Wilson County. We are trying to get rezoning in order to go through and move a business from 14904 Lebanon Road that's already in the annexation of Mount Juliet to this piece of property for the ability to grow.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Or you want to go to the next one?
Ladies and gentlemen, a public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, June 18th, 2018, at 7:00 PM or thereafter here in the county commission room of the county courthouse, 228 East Main Street here in Lebanon, Tennessee. The following item is up for consideration. An application has been made by Jean Jones to rezone property owned by John Major and Amanda Baird from A1 Agricultural zoning to R1 Rural Residential zoning. The property is located on Murphysboro Road and Flatwoods Road and is referenced by Wilson County Tax Map 136, Parcel 17 and 32. The properties combined contain approximately 68.5 acres. A copy of this request has been on file in the Wilson County Planning Office located here in the basement of this facility and has been available for inspection during regular business hours. Anyone desiring to comment is requested to come forward at this time.
Anyone here wishing to speak on the property? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and I'll have a motion to go back into session.
Some votes aye.
Any discussion? Commissioner, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Mr. Tom?
The first item is the rezoning request made by Brandon Goodwin to rezone property located at 9077 Lebanon Road from A1 Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial. This is in Mount Juliet's extraterritorial planning region, and therefore was required to receive a recommendation from that planning commission, is the planning commission of jurisdiction over that area.
jurisdiction over that area. Uh, it does come to you with a positive recommendation from the city of Mount Juliet's Regional Planning Commission.
Hear a motion for this?
Tom, I want to, this is in my district, he's got Jim Emperton's for his district board.
It is, that was an oversight on my receptionist's part, and Jim actually called us about it, but, um, it is in your district, Jim's district starts across the road, across Lebanon Road on South Side.
So I just wanted to say, I didn't have any calls, negative or positive, so I recommend it be approved.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Tom?
Uh, the next item is the rezoning of, uh, approximately 68 and a half acres located at the corner of Flatwoods Road and Murphysboro Road. This is actually split in two parcels, one on the north side of Flatwoods Road and one on the south side of Flatwoods Road. It's in Sonia Robinson's district, and again, it's right there on the, the cusp of districts. Uh, I think Terry Ash's district is across 231. So, um, this did go to the Wilson County Regional Planning Commission, and does come to you, uh, with their positive recommendation.
Hear a motion to approve this request. Commissioner Robinson?
Uh, this is in my district. Uh, this is met with no opposition whatsoever, so I request for approval.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion now?
For the record, it's, it's, the best reference I can give you is, uh, Wilson County Property Map 136, Parcel 17, and Parcel 32.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Thank you, and I hope you, everyone here is enjoying their summer, and have a good one.
Any old business to come before this body? Any new business? I will make one address before we leave. We talked tonight about reserves, and, and well noted, to look at those. Second thing we talk about is seven, uh, you know, falling below 8 million. Uh, there were a day we didn't have, uh, much more than 100,000. And so, that is a problem, uh, but it is a good problem. Uh, so just want to make that note. No new business? Hear one more motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Walker?
Uh, Mayor Hato, Chairman of the Cable TV Committee, I would just like to thank Tressa Bush for her work with the PEG channel. This is the first, uh, video broadcast of the county commission, full commission meeting. And we do have three, uh, gentlemen here that are interns from Wilson Central. Maybe if Tressa Bush could, uh, just present them.
Dakota Russ, Seth Sanders, Alex Neal.
Let's give them a round of applause. Great job by all of you, and, uh, you could tell there were a few jitters under, everybody being under the camera tonight. Thank you, thank you for all, and, uh, hear a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. We adjourn.